Gentlemen, we'll begin with our planning and zoning commission meeting. We'd like to thank you all for coming. The time now is about four o'clock, maybe a minute after. And we have our agenda before us. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the June 2nd, 2015 agenda, which is today.
I move approval of the June 2nd agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Chair and seconded that we approve today's agenda for June 2nd, 2015. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the agenda is accepted. The second order is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held last month on May 5th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Stephen and seconded that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on May 5th, 2015. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved as read. Okay, the third item is we will receive and place on file the financial report for April of 2015, um, staff report.
This is Anderson with staff. This is the budget performance report through the end of April, which puts us at 75 percent of the year. Um, as you can see, uh, the first page there, the first two pages is revenue. We are, uh, at 91 percent in a couple of places where we should be at 75 percent, 81 percent. We just had the council approve a sale of property for $28,000 last night. So that'll put us over 100 percent for that, um, full item area. Going back to, uh, so we're looking good for revenue for the budget. Moving into the expenses, we're pretty much right on track. We have some personnel, uh, line items that we've changed based on, uh, part-time versus, uh, full-time for the economic development position that Don T. Meyer works part-time for us now. Um, so otherwise, we're right on track there as well.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I just was wondering, it shows 90 percent of the salary budget. Is that right?
Are you on page three there?
Yes, three of 14.
Um, yeah, down at the bottom, that's the economic development part. So we, we kind of changed how we were going to code some of that for, that's, that's not the, the main salary. That is the economic development salary. So a portion of my, uh, pay comes out of economic development line items and a portion comes out of planning. Actually, another portion comes out of CD, out of Waterloo housing. Really makes my timesheet fun.
Yeah.
But, uh, we're, we're actually fine there even though it's at 90 percent because we're going to re-code some of that to different sections. Again, that, most of that is Don T. Meyer, the part-time position.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we will receive and place on file the financial report for April 2015. Here, next item on the agenda is oral presentations. This is an opportunity to present any item that is not currently on today's agenda. If you have an item that's not on today's agenda, we ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to new business. Yeah, our first one is going to be a hearing. It's a request by, um, forgive me if I mispronounced your name, Gilhermo and Roxanne Galvez, to rezone 3.62 acres from A1 agricultural district to R1 and 2 family residence district for the purpose of constructing one new single-family home generally located north of 2533 Burton Avenue. In your agenda, it will be on, starting on page one. And at this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Paddy McGee stating aye. Paddy McGee do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 21st, 2015. Can we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Paveyson and seconded that we receive and place this notice on file. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, notice is accepted. Staff report.
This is Graham with staff. Uh, the applicant is requesting a rezon of the 3.62 acre property, uh, that is currently zoned A1 agricultural district, uh, to R1, 1 and 2 family residence district, uh, in order to construct a new single-family home on the property. Uh, impact on surrounding, uh, the neighborhood and surrounding land use. The request could have a negative impact on the surrounding area and surrounding land uses due to its proximity to industrial uses in the immediate area and is also shown on the future land use map as industrial. Uh, there is a home located immediately to the south of this property. However, it has been there since 1900. Uh, there's also a home located to the east on property that was rezoned to R1 back in 2001 to allow the home. However, staff was opposed to that request at the time. The property has been, this property has been zoned A1 since adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. Uh, surrounding land uses to the north, uh, you have vacant land and some industrial uses, zoned M1, light industrial district. Uh, to the, to the south, you have that one existing house zoned A1. And then you do have, uh, a neighborhood further to the south, zoned R2, 1 and 2 family residence district. Uh, to the east, you have that, an existing house zoned R1 and then also existing industrial uses, zoned M1. And to the west, there is a vacant development ground, zoned A1 agricultural and M2 heavy industrial district. Uh, there is no sanitary sewer nearby to the, serve this site, so the property would need to install a septic system if the rezoning is approved. Uh, there is a 12-inch water main that does stop, uh, at the north end of this property, uh, which is indicated they could, uh, connect to water if the, this rezon is approved. Uh, the future land use map does designate this area as industrial. Uh, the rezon request would not be in conformance with the future land use map designation for this area. Uh, the applicant's proposing a rezon of the property to purchase, uh, purchase it from the existing owner to construct a new home on the property. Uh, it's 3.62 acres in size. Uh, it's basically, has trees on it and some of the area is in agricultural production. Uh, the property is zoned A1 agricultural district and the rezon to R1 is required for the, uh, new dwelling construction. Uh, the property is located along Burton Avenue, which is between West Airline Highway to the north and Lucas Street to the south. Uh, the area generally located in the northwest and east are mainly zoned either agriculturally or industrially, uh, while the general area to the south is zoned residentially. Uh, the property directly to the east at 2540 Burton Avenue, uh, was rezoned by the city council from M2P planned industrial district to R1, 1 and 2 family residence district, uh, back in 2001 in order to allow for the construction of a new house. However, staff was opposed to the request at that time. Uh, the future land use map, which is a part of the City of Waterloo Comprehensive Plan, does show this property as industrial, as well as the properties to the southwest and to the north. Uh, the land located directly to the east and further to the south within the existing residential subdivision is shown as low-density residential. Uh, based on the map, this request would not appear to be in conformance with the future land use map for this area as it is anticipated that this area would develop with industrial uses. Uh, therefore, staff is recommending that the request to rezon this property from A1 agricultural district to R1, 1 and 2 family residence district, uh, be denied for the following reasons. Uh, number one, the request would not be in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map, which designate this site and is industrial. And the request to construct a new residence in close proximity to industrial uses would not appear to be the best and, the highest and best use of the land. Any questions for staff?
Thank you, Shannon. Before I begin, I'd like to read, um, if you have an agenda for a new general rules for the public participation. I just want to read rules three, five, and six. Cause, um, over the past year, we've had some very, um, emotional issues come up because it is dealing with property. I mean, this is your land, many of you, you own real estate and property and homes. So I just kind of wanted to go over that. So as we move forward this afternoon, we can do it in a, um, hopefully a very amiable and agreeable way. Number three says interested citizens may speak one time per item. Please limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Although generally discouraged at the discretion of the chair, interested citizens may be allowed to speak more, uh, once per item. And sometimes if we need clarification, we may ask for that. Um, it's just in the matter of respected time because in the past, we've had kind of bantering going back and forth. We want to be respectful of your time for the commission's time because we do need to keep a quorum. So I just want to point out, if you can have to speak once, um, share your comments because we do want to hear them. They are important. Number five is keep comments germane and refrain from personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks or repetitive misinformation. And six is all comments requested for information shall be directed towards the chair and not towards individuals in the audience. All comments shall be in keeping with proper and courteous conduct. So when it reduces the chair, um, although on the chair, it's for the commission because it's, you're bringing it before us. So we just want to point that out because it's been, um, a little heated at times and we don't want that to be the case here. So if you can think about what you're going to present and just be respectful of the time, we do want to hear from you because it is important and we do consider that. So with that, I'd like to open up. If there's anyone for or against this request, we ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the commission and the audience.
Hey there, good afternoon. My name is Roxanne. Unfortunately, my husband's out working out of town, so he was unable to be here today. What can I say? We have a family, five children, ages, ages from two to 19, and we would like to build our dream home. Any consideration is greatly appreciated.
I'm Fred Mehe. Uh, I reside at 4566 Whispering Pines in Cedar Falls. Uh, I'm a real estate broker and I represent Mr. and Mrs. David Good, who are the owners of the property. Thanks for your time today. I know it's, uh, uh, busy, I know you all have busy schedules and you take time to review this information. It's all important and I appreciate the planners, uh, the work that they put together to make their recommendation and, and really research this property. We have, uh, been on a track to sell this property for Mr. and Mrs. Good for several years. And, uh, it seems like if you look at the pictures, that looks like an absolutely beautiful spot to build a home. Uh, there's so much, uh, developed industrial ground around Waterloo that is available, that has all the city services. There are a lot of choices there. I'm real familiar with the process and, and understand that the land use map would, would indicate this would be industrial property. And, uh, and it would make sense with POS, they're immediately north. But the reality of it is, we have endeavored to try and find, uh, users, industrial-type users, and haven't found anybody. And we have had numerous parties that have been interested in building a home there. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Galvez have decided that this is where they want to move their family of five. And I'm kind of excited for her. You can see she's a little emotional here. And I suggested that she get up and introduce herself so people can see that, uh, we've got somebody that's a real person that really wants to, to add to the community here. Uh, I'm going to just read quickly from our City of Waterloo goals. Uh, goal number three is to facilitate and promote the development of housing options to meet the needs of current and future Waterloo citizens. And I know, working with, uh, Noel Anderson and the group, that, you know, we want to see new houses in Waterloo. And we can go out along San Martin, we can go out south of San Martin. And, and there's a need for housing in Waterloo. And, uh, this is, uh, this is going to fill a need in a small area and it's going to provide some tax revenue for the city when they get done with their, with their plan there. But with that as a backdrop, um, I'd like to say that historically, this neighborhood, uh, has been active when, uh, met with zoning changes in the past. I think, uh, two years ago, uh, Ms. Tackett and, and Dustin and, uh, um, a couple of other members were here when Mr. and Mrs. Good, uh, had a, uh, site that was being, uh, up for getting a special permit used for, uh, a, uh, use on the property just immediately to the west. And, and, uh, the city, uh, planners approved that plan and recommended that. But when we got in front of the planning and zoning, the, the outcry from the community, uh, was met with a resounding denial from the, from the commissioners. And, uh, the neighbors were happy that they were heard and, and, uh, so they've got, they've got an active, uh, interest in seeing what's going to happen there. So I would say that this will be something that will be represented, will be well-received by the neighbors. If you look at the uses there, you've got a residence immediately across the street, a residence immediately south. And the rest of the property, you've got light industrial north. Um, and then we've got, uh, agricultural and, uh, heavy industrial to the west. Uh, but, uh, really all the adjoining ground, uh, north and west is vacant. It's all natural there. So I think it's a real, it's a nice fit. If you, I have, got just some, uh, some supplemental information. There's three sets here. I didn't know how many commissioners would be here. But there, uh, there's 20 to 30-foot towering trees along the, uh, borders of this property. Creates a real nice screen from the, from the building site to the adjacent properties. It's a lovely spot to build a home and, and it, it has natural screening there. And that, that's going to be an asset. And, um, uh, uh, I guess I'd say in conclusion that, uh, the Galvezes are well aware of what, uh, the property zoning is, what the land use, intended use is. And, uh, they'd like to build their home there. They're fully informed of what's going on and, uh, and I'd urge you to consider, um, allowing this zoning to move forward. Thank you for your time.
My name is Don Sullivan. I live at 2533 Burton Avenue, the land immediately south of this area. I've taught in the Waterloo schools, uh, private schools for 40 years. Um, I've lived out there for 35 years. Um, at one time, in the northeast corner of this property, there was a house. Um, it was torn down a number of years ago. Excuse me. Um, I'm here to support their, uh, request. I've raised two of my children out there and basically four of my grandkids. Um, my six-year-old was just out there yesterday and it's an absolute wonderful place for kids. Um, you can get out and enjoy the woods, you can just have a good time. Um, Mr. Carter across the street has a residential house there. Um, the land around me, north and west, has been basically agricultural land since I've lived there. For 35 years, they've been, in fact, they just planted yesterday. Um, there's a little creek that runs through the west end of the property. That's the groundwater that's pumped out from the, uh, businesses north of us. And it flows through the land and enters the field west of us. It's about three feet wide and about five inches deep. Perfectly crystal clear water, another great place for kids to get an experience in the woods. So I'm here to support the request. I think it's a great idea for that area to, this to be rezoned to, um, residential use.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Ms. May, I have a question. Um, when you mentioned about, there was not, um, that many people that have been looking at that property for industrial use. Um, I guess when I'm, as I'm considering about, um, I appreciate that you want to build a home out there and it sounds like it's a real good place as far as the neighbors. But I also hear that they want to, it's zoned for industrial. You said that there hasn't been that many, um, people interested in building out there. Do you, I just wondered why? Is there a reason? Is there, did that change? My only concern is if you build a house out there, will that deter from property values down the road? Should you decide to sell or? I'm just kind of wondering how that would reflect as a homeowner? If that starts getting built up or do you foresee it being slow? That's a lot I'm asking, but I'm just trying to get an idea of the dynamics of that area.
Well, you know, the, it's been pretty stable out there. There haven't been a lot of changes. Uh, most development, uh, there's been a very little industrial development out in that area. And I think they're pretty well, pretty well full. I don't think that there are any other lots available. We have, um, we have, uh, presented this property and marketed it towards industrial-type users because that's what we know as the, uh, the, the city's, uh, intended use. Uh, but we just, uh, over mo, several years, we just haven't been able to find anybody with any industrial use that wanted to go out there. It isn't fully served. There is no city sewer there. The sewer stops up at, uh, Daniel Street about 300, uh, or, or 400 feet north of here. There's water directly in front. So for somebody to want to develop this lot for an industrial use, uh, they're going to have to bring sewer down as well. Uh, and so it'd be, it'd be costly to do that. There are just a lot of choices. I mean, we're in real good condition here in Waterloo with a lot of industrial site choices. And, uh, frankly, the, the strongest interests we've had have been for people wanting to build their homes there. So I've been out there at, uh, 20 below zero weather with, uh, uh, families that look at, look at it and decide, oh, this would be a great place to build. And I'm thinking, could you think a little bit quicker? It's chilly out here. But, but, you know, truth, you know, honestly, or, um, seriously, uh, we've had, the interest we've had has been limited. And we've marketed it far and wide. And, uh, I think it's a, you know, it's kind of run its course. And Mr. and Mrs. Good, Lightwood Good, would like to sell the property. They bought it with the intention of, uh, building a home out there and having a small business use with it. Uh, so they're going to kind of, uh, bridge the gap with two uses. But, uh, ultimately, they, they purchased other housing years ago and, and it's just taken this long for us to get, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Galvez, uh, ready to step up. Does that answer your question sufficiently?
It does, it does. I appreciate it does. Thank you.
Do you need a motion to close the hearing? I'd make a motion to, uh, to close the hearing at this time.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Paveyson and seconded that we approve the hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, I would turn it back now to the commission for your discussion or motion.
So I have a question, Mrs. Thornsberry. In 2001, the city council decided that it would be appropriate to have the people across Burton build their home. And so, am I correct in assuming a precedence has already been established for that area? That's one for staff. And the second one is, the future land map is not really sealed in concrete. It, it changes all the time. In fact, the very next object, or subject we're going to deal with is with, uh, the school area. And it's, it's being advised to amend the future land map. So I don't think hanging our heads on the, uh, the fact that this is already zoned as industrial is that relevant frankly? Because when you look at what's out there, it very easily could be another residence and not, um, impact the future development. If it is a residence, we would get taxes from the property owner when they build their new home. So what about that comment about, uh, 2001 setting a precedence?
This is Anderson with staff. And of course, we take each rezoning request separately. We have to follow what the policies of the zoning ordinance say, what the future land use map says regardless of what the council action is unless we were to amend the future land use map. So our recommendations are based on those. You know, and when this, the future land use map was last amended, um, I think back in about 2000 or somewhere around there, 2003. This was a difficult area, as you may recall, for the commission. It was a matter of where do you put the yellow, where do you put the purple on the map? For the industrial versus the residential. And, and there is a mix out there. One of the, you know, the, I guess the factors that we looked at when we were, we were looking at this new request was a number of things. Number one, um, directly to the west or southwest of this site. The city does have, uh, a number of acres now that we bought for potential, probably twofold. One, you may recall, that was where they wanted to put a recycling site, um, for, for rock, rock crushing and all that. That was stick for construction. The city traded them land at the northeast industrial park, which is a heavy industrial area because of opposition from the neighbors. We also have some drainage needs in that particular area. So buying that land or swapping that land at the time, we thought would help serve those drainage needs. Plus, it does give some options about, you know, currently, um, on your map, you can see Longfellow and Cloverdale at the bottom left are both streets that just dead-end into that land. Obviously, for fire protection purposes, they don't like dead-end streets like that. They like cul-de-sacs where they can turn the fire truck around. Um, you normally like connectivity between streets. So we, with the city owning the land, there's a potential for, you know, do you bring that street up and around and connect it and put cul-de-sacs with some more houses and have the north half for industrial? So there's some flexibility in the area. At the same time, the city could develop it for industrial, light industrial-type lots that would not create the excessive noise and dust and all that that was the concern of the rock crushing. To the north, we do have of this site, we do have Omega Cabinets, one of our largest employers in Waterloo. Um, so we're always cognizant of that. That brings along with it heavy noise. And, and I know that they talked about the applicants are aware of what's going on out there as more industry may want to, that maybe does business with Omega, would want to build out there. Or, um, Daniel Drive is shown on your map. That was actually a rise road, um, from the early 90s that was built. So there's a number of lots on the south side of that for industrial development. So there's some more industrial potential out there. Those are factors that we looked at. One of the other things with the idea of the sewer not being extended, um, anytime you have these breaks or gaps in the systems, it can cause problems elsewhere. Sewers are a little bit more independent of each other. It's not like a water main where you need to have a loop. Um, obviously, if it was developed industrially, the city would normally extend the sewer to the site as part of the industrial development agreement. And we will not have that with the proposed development either. So that, those are all factors that we looked at in our recommendation.
This is Morrison. I'd like to point out for maybe members of the commission who aren't as familiar with this area. If you went just south on Burton, um, beyond where the picture is, there's a lot of residential. There's a lot of houses. This is right before it spaces off and there's a stretch before it becomes industrial. There's a lot of housing, even though the house all by itself, looks like it's all by itself. There's a lot more further south. And if you guys are okay with it, I just have one question I'd like to ask the applicant. If you're okay with that. I have one question for you. Have you visited the site during different hours of the day? The reason I'm asking is, at the south portion of Burton, there's a sign that says no semi-traffic, but I know that the semis completely ignore that and semis go up and down that road all day long. So as long as you've seen it, you know, five o'clock, six o'clock, and you realize that during farming season, there'll be semis running 24/7? I want to make sure, I know that the realtor said, "Your eyes wide open." I just want to hear it from you that you really know what's in your neighborhood. And if you're okay with that.
Yes ma'am, I mean, um, we've talked about it at the county meeting and we understand that, you know, it's out there, there's a parking lot there.
Ma'am, could you come to the mic? Sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that. We've been out there, um, looking at it. We have gone several different times. I haven't had any, seen any semis. Um, but even if they were, I wouldn't see a problem with it, with them going down there. But, um, yeah, we're well, well aware of that. Um, we do have tall trees and we're kind of just looking at the, we looked at both sides of it. We, my children looked at it too and they're like, "Mom, did you, you know, do you realize that they're over there?" I'm like, "Yeah." I'm like, "Did it bother you?" They're like, "Well, no, not really." You know, there's that parking lot up there. And, you know, we kind of took it seriously and that's why we submitted the application because we were open to everything that would be considered.
Right.
Any other discussion from the commission? If not, I would ask if we can have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Second. Yes, we move Mike Paveyson and seconded that we approve the request for
Res zoning.
To rezonate from A1 to R1, 1, 2 family residence. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'd like to have a roll call though for this. A yes would mean approval for the request and a no would be a denial.
Thornsberry?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Passes. Six, nothing. So this is a recommendation, um, from the planning commission. We'll go to the city council and probably, it has to be set for a data hearing. So it's probably about three weeks out at the city council. Staff will be in contact with you.
Okay, the time now is 4:30. The next item on the agenda is the request by Iowa Hartland Habitat for Humanity for a site plan amendment to the R1 RP planned 1 and 2 family residence district to allow for the construction of 14 new single-family homes located at the former Irving Elementary School at the corner of Hawthorne Avenue and West 6th Street. And that begins near page, uh, page nine. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Paddy McGee stating aye. Paddy McGee do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, photos, site plan and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 21st. mail on May 24, 2015. We have a motion received and placed as notice on file.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by
Flynn.
Flynn, and seconded, that we have received and placed as notice on file. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The applicant is requesting to construct 14 new single-family houses on the former Irving Elementary School at the corner of Hawthorne Avenue and West 6th Street. They request to construct the new single-family houses would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. It would appear that the, that the proposed houses and their proposed designs would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood. The area in question is Zoned R1 RP Planned Residence District and has been zoned as such since April 4, 2011. All surrounding properties are Zoned R2, 1 and 2 Family Residence District. As noted, the applicant is requesting to construct 14 single-family homes located along Hawthorne Avenue and West 6th Street, Eureka Street and Western Avenue. The Planned Residence District is a site plan specific, and changes to the site plan must be approved through the site plan amendment process as either a major or minor amendment. There are multiple styles of houses being proposed for the site, ranging from ranch-style bungalows along with two-story dwellings. Each dwelling is shown with an attached garage or detached garage large enough to accommodate at least one vehicle. The tract of land is approximately 3.5 acres in size, and the lots range from sizes 8,959 square feet to 13,999 square feet. And there is also a tract A that is shown adjacent to lot one, that is 1,867.6 square feet in size, and will be conveyed to the adjacent existing residents for access. The site plan shows a 15-foot utility drainage unit along the street frontage of all lots. The front yard and rear yard setbacks are shown as 30 foot for all lots. Lots one through three, six through 11, and the south lot line, or the south lot line of lots four and five show a side yard setback of 6.5 feet. The north lot lines of lots four and five show a 20-foot side yard setback. Lots 12 through 14 show a side yard setback of eight feet, with the east street side yard setback showing 20 feet. No site plan was approved at the time of the rezon in April of 2011. Therefore, Habitat for Humanity is before you today submitting a site plan for the area. The site plan submitted shows the typical home layout with garages for this area. Minor changes to the layouts include detached garages shall be considered as part of the site plan submitted today. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment in the R1 RP Planned Residence District be approved for the following reasons. The request is located within the primary growth area according to the City of Waterloo Comprehensive Plan and can be served by existing, by extension of existing utilities. The proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and would be compatible to existing development in the area. And the proposed development with, is within density requirements set forth in the zoning area, zoning ordinance for the City of Waterloo. Subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, included but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, and that sidewalk is properly installed along all frontages of all developed lots, including corner lots. Questions for staff?
This is Thornsberry with a question. The, I'm not sure I understand the sentence that, or the paragraph that starts with no site plan was approved about the detached garages. So did, the first plan was with detached garages, and now they're attaching the single car garage?
Initially, back into April of 2011, there was no site plan submitted with that, with the area. Now Habitat is actually coming forth with a site plan. The site plan that they included actually does have attached garages with it. We are actually including, or in their data dedication, they are stating that detached garages are also allowed on those properties. So with the site plan approval process to do it before you today, we're planning, or considering those detached garages as part of the site plan as submitted. If that clears that up.
So when, back in 2003, when the, when the area was rezoned, when you rezoned to a planned residence district, you can rezon it to an RP with the site plan to come later, or you can rezon it at that time with the site plan. At the time, the, the city was, was rezoning multiple sites. They just, the council just rezoned them all RP, knowing that plans would come later.
So in that new proposed change to the code, single car garages are okay? In today's world, most people, most residents have two cars. We're going to create a whole new subdivision with single car garages? And a potential to it for detached garage as well?
The current ordinance does not require any garages.
Correct.
So we think this is a step in the right direction to help create more garage space with designs. A lot of existing or older neighborhoods with lots, it's harder to fit double garages on unless they're detached garages sitting back behind, where they kind of curve behind the house a little bit or something. So we're, we wrote the ordinance, the new proposed ordinance would allow for single garages as well. Part of our intent there was that would give some storage space for things other than just vehicles, depending upon how big the garage was in terms of that single garage even. But then you'd still have driveway space to park another car out front.
Thank you.
I had a question regarding as far as the drainage and sewer and all that's okay with the Baltimore addition just being basically, you know, two blocks to the other direction, and all of those houses being built or actually being sold, not it out, to sell the houses in the old Baltimore field. This would not create any sewer or water issues with these two developments that close?
Eric, first, you know, the sanitary sewers in that area are sized adequately for sanitary floors, so that shouldn't be an issue. And they have to have stormwater management plan, which will come along as part of the process as they develop there if this is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, if anyone from the audience would like to come forward to speak for or against this request, we'd ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the audience and the commission.
Hi, I'm Ally Parrish. I'm the director at Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity, located at 803 West 5th Street in Waterloo. I just am here mostly to answer any questions that you have, and of course, to, to give our support for the project. We're very excited about the possibility. I've done a lot of work to take a look at our house designs, to fit our lot sizes, to fit what, what is around it, and just be a good neighbor and a good addition to the, to the existing area. So love to answer any questions anybody has. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
I'm Steve Sastre, N, from 4123 East Park Road in Cedar Falls. I'm the current board chair for Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity. I had the opportunity a number of years ago to come and speak on this same project to the city council when we were proposing habitat, single-story homes. I wanted to make sure that the planning zoning committee knows, and you've seen pictures in your, in your documents, that since that time, we've decided that, that we really want to make sure that we're really a good partner here in the community. Not only to allow families that are in need to be able to have homes, but else, also help with some of the tax burden the city has, to be able to, be able to give back to the city with some of the, the taxes that'll be generated from these facilities or from these houses. The issue that I want to bring up is that we plan on, on putting single-family homes, no rentals. It'll be a really good, strong neighborhood with people that want to live there, be there, keep the neighborhood up. And we will plan on putting multiple styled homes in there versus what we had proposed in the past. So we think it'll be a great addition to that whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? If not, here, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Hank Wellnitz. Live at 400 Clare Street, Cedar Falls. We've talked a lot about the, the houses that will go there. I want to talk a little bit about the people that'll live there. I've been involved with Habitat for Humanity for 26 years now, and I worked on approximately 87 Habitat homes, all the way from Calgary, Canada, to Kentucky, and about 65 homes in the Waterloo area. And over that period of time, I've got to know the people that live in those homes, and how the trajectory of their lives has changed by having stable, decent, affordable housing that they have worked hard for with sweat equity, that they continue to pay on their mortgage. I would be happy to have any one of those people that I've worked with over 26 years be my neighbor. And I think it will be a tremendous addition to Waterloo to move this project forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hi. I just wanted to also chime in.
Thanks, sir. I just need your name and address for the audience.
You bet. Abraham L. Sanchez, Jr., 218 Clay Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I just wanted to also chime in and acknowledge that this is the very kind of project, quite frankly, that should be celebrated because it's very consistent with a lot of the human rights objectives all over the nation when it comes to affirmatively furthering fair housing in terms of encouraging this kind of development in different parts of the community that you don't normally see sometimes. And because of all the things that have already been mentioned here, this is something that Waterloo should celebrate.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? If not, I turn it back over to the commission for motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, and seconded, that we close the hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Jury's clear. And I would turn it over for any final thoughts and/or a motion. Yeah, a motion.
Ms. Buckles, that neighborhood is very near and dear to me. I grew up there, went to Irving School when it was still standing. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It's very, well, back then, it wasn't as diverse as it is now, but it's a great neighborhood for kids to grow up in, a safe neighborhood. I don't think it's deteriorated at all. And I'm happy to hear that somebody's going in there and finally doing something.
This is Morrison. I just want to say 14 houses, how exciting. And I do like the Habitat for Humanity project. My father always said, anything worth having is worth working for. And I think if we can give that and bring to some families and continue to bring what we're doing to the city, I think it's a good thing.
This is Anderson with staff. Just before you vote to it, I just want to thank the Waterloo Community Schools for working with the City of Waterloo on this. We've worked with them through their, I think what they, they called it their property analysis or something of all the school properties. And I think they've really been a great partner to the City of Waterloo and, and the citizens there to try and create new neighborhood vitality in some of these older school locations, too.
And I would like to say on behalf of the schools, these kids will, just can walk to their elementary down at the new Irving, as you would call it. And so it's a great location for that. And I too grew up and went to Irving. And in fact, I drove by this morning, and I thought that lot looks bare. So I, you know, it would be really exciting if this gets going and see families back playing on the ball field around there, so.
I would make a motion to approve the request with the conditions noted.
Second.
Please, we move Mike Davis in second, that we approve the motion to, the request by Heartland Habitat for Humanity to, to the site plan amendment for R1 RP Planned 1 and 2 Family Residence District to allow for the construction of the 14 new single-family homes located at the former Irving Elementary School. Okay, is there any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. The time now is 4:45. Our next item on the agenda is a plat. And with everyone's permission, we will combine the plats, slipping your packet is B1 and 2, the plats, the request by the Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity for the 14 lot preliminary plat of Irving Square Edition located at the former Irving Elementary School at the corner of Hawthorne Avenue and West 6th Street, and also a request by the Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity for the 14 lot final plat of Irving Square Edition located at the former Irving Elementary School at the corner of Hawthorne Avenue and West 6th Street. So we're asking to combine both the preliminary and the final plat of Irving Square Edition, and those begin on page 19. At this time, we should receive, um, we don't need to do that. So staff report.
This is Miller with staff. As stated, the applicant is requesting the preliminary and final plat, 3.5 to 6 acres, and 214 lots for development for single-family homes. The tract of land that the 14 new families, single-family residents will be constructive upon is located on the former Irving Elementary School site. And existing sidewalks are shown along the northeast and west property lines on the plats. Proposed sidewalks are shown along the southerly property line. And average, the average size of the properties directly adjacent to the site in question are approximately 9,900 square feet. The plat shows lots that are approximately the same size as the surrounding lots, if not larger. The applicant has submitted multiple home designs that appear to be matching existing homes in the area. Preliminary plats must show property lines, building setbacks, current and proposed utility lines, street information, contours and vegetation location. The submitted preliminary plat does contain all of the above information, but the plat does not include the proposed topography, contours or streetlight locations, which are required with submissions of the preliminary plat proposals. For final plats, the submission of a final plat must include the property lines, building lines, adjoining subdivisions, data dedication, engineer's certificate of survey easements right of way with, and all are included with the final plat also. Therefore, staff is recommending that the request for the preliminary and final plat of Irving Square Edition be approved for the following reasons. The request is located within the primary growth area according to the City of Waterloo Comprehensive Plan and can be served by existing, extension of existing utilities in the area. The proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and is compatible to existing development in the area. And the proposed development is within the density requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance. Subject to the following conditions, that sidewalks are properly installed along the frontage, frontages of all developed lots, including corner lots, and then an updated final plat is submitted to city staff before going before the city council.
I have one question. So that subject is, the final plat is submitted to the city council?
Yes. There were a few minor things that staff would like to see changed on the final plats and preliminary plats before we can submit those to city council. And we have relayed those on to the applicant and the engineer, and those are being done as far as I think I know. So we just added that as a condition before they can go before city council.
Okay. Questions for staff? Okay. At this time, if there's anyone who'd like to speak for or against this, we ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the audience and the commission. If not, I would turn it back to the commission for final thoughts and/or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the, let me look here, the preliminary and, and final plat with the conditions noted.
Second.
Please, we move Mike Davis in second, that we approve the preliminary and final plat of the Irving Square Edition with the conditions stated by the staff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, the time now is 4:50. We're moving on to section C, special permits. Our first one is a request by Leonardo and Irene Cadenas for a special permit to allow for a hubby farm located in the R2 1 and 2 Family Residence District located at 526 Quincy Street on some page some page 34. Staff report.
Okay, this is Graham with staff. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for a hobby farm on the property that would allow them to keep up to 12 chickens on a lot that's .39 acres in size. Staff is concerned that having up to 12 chickens on this property could have a negative impact in the area, given the smaller size of the lot. The chickens would be located between an existing detached garage and a shed away from property lines. The surrounding land uses are mainly residential in nature. The applicant's are requesting the special permit for the chickens. The applicant actually mentions roosters in the application. However, roosters are not allowed in the city, so the property would only be allowed to have hens if the hobby farm request is approved. The applicants have indicated that the chickens would be housed in a 12-by-6-foot chicken coop located between an existing 576-square-foot garage and a 100-square-foot shed to the southwest of the house. The applicants have noted that the pen will be six foot in height and would have a wood cover on the top. Their request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area as the coop would be located, appears to be a minimum 100 foot from the nearest houses, as there are multiple lots owned by the surrounding property owners. Also, the applicant does, did submit a petition of approval signed by several of the surrounding property owners, including the property owner directly to the south, who would appear to be the most affected by this request. Staff is somewhat concerned by the number of chickens based on the smaller lot size. It is slightly larger than a typical-sized residential lot. There have been two recent requests for hobby farms in the city. The first located at 3031 East Charles Road. That was approved to have up to 24 chickens. However, that lot was 4.7 acres in size. The other property at 258 Kenilworth Road was denied to have up to five chickens, and that was on a lot that was .22 acres in size. Staff understands that there is a petition of approval from several surrounding property owners, and that the total lot size of the property is slightly larger than a typical residential lot. So staff would be suggesting that the property be allowed for, to allow up to eight chickens. We did, I handed out to you a letter that was from a surrounding property owner. I emailed it to you yesterday and also provided a paper copy, so you had a chance to read it ahead of time of someone that was concerned, a neighbor that was concerned about this request. And we also did get a phone call, I believe from an Aaron Thomas. This was, this person was, did receive a notice in the mail, noticed the property owners and they called and were voiced opposition to the request as well. Staff is recommending approval for the special permit to allow up to eight chickens based on the fact that the hobby farm would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area with the reduction of the number of chickens. And the applicant has indicated that the chickens would be housed in a coop located between an existing garage and a shed away from property lines. Subject to the following conditions, one, that the hobby farm be limited to a maximum of eight hens with no roosters. And two, that the chickens be contained within the fenced-in area in the location shown on the applicant's site plan. Any questions for staff?
I have a basic question, and that is, who checks if they have eight, or nine, or 10 hens? And what is the checking on this, make sure that they're in compliance?
And if they have 10, who removes the hens?
This is Anderson with staff. Generally, it would be probably complaint-driven if they, it was thought that they had more code enforcement officers with the empower to enforce the zoning ordinance and would go out and look at their case.
And our code enforcement is pretty backed up at this point? And we want to send them out looking for numbers of chickens?
If they get complaints on them, they would have to, yes.
I believe that's how this property was found out about code enforcement.
I have a question from staff. And we approved, was it five chickens for a home on, for hobby farm? Isn't that further?
We deny.
Oh, we deny that?
No, that was a staff report.
Okay, that's all my, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I'm curious as to why eight was chosen? Why, why, how do you, how do you come to the number of chickens?
That's always a good question. We've been doing some research on that based on the increasing number of hobby farm requests. And we found different communities with different regulations. I believe eight was one that we found for the size of parcel that they have was pretty common in a number of multiple different ordinances in terms of the amount of chickens that they allowed. And they range, you know, some of them are very close to others, others are way off on one side or the other. There was one particular ordinance, I think it was out near San Diego, California, that allowed two chickens regardless of the size of your lot. Others had a per acre or per distance that the coop is from the property line to other property lines, numbers and all that. So we tried to kind of pick the middle of all the ordinances we could find at this point, since we don't have one specific to the numbers.
And this is currently in existence, is what I'm hearing?
The chickens are there.
They are currently there. So has there been any problems noted of kids walking by there or vandalism? Because Cunningham School's pretty close to that location.
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know what else, information we had from code enforcement, okay.
Okay, I would turn this over to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you would come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the audience and the commission.
Excuse me, Aaron Morgan, and this is office block 1164, Waterloo, Iowa. And I, when the property owner is in this vicinity where they're having these chickens, and he's saying having a problem with code enforcement here on the amount of chickens, I've got the solution. I'm going to be against having those chickens here in this area. And this area is a redevelopment area. They just build new houses in there, see? And there's a house that had just been put in a couple of years on, just adjoining here. And this is something here that is not wanted. And these chickens are going to be housed, you say, in a garage. And then there's going to be summertime, you know? There's no way to clean those garages. And it's going to be smelled, and there's going to be flies, you know, that we're going to have. And I am against it for that purpose, and among a few others there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this request? If not, I would turn it back to the commission for some thoughts.
I have a question regarding code enforcement. Were this to be approved, and as the gentleman said, there were an issue with smell and upkeep and that sort of thing. Is there a remedy? Can this be revoked? Can this be, sort of what is the process if they don't hold up to their end of the bargain?
Eric, do you want to talk about the annual review?
I'm trying to find the section here in the ordinance that we put in. Hobby farms are item number 26 under the list of special, special permit uses in the special provisions, exceptions, and modifications section of the ordinance. And towards the end of that section, it talks about, "An approved hobby farm shall require an annual license issued by planning staff. The license shall be valid from July 1 to the following June 30. Every hobby farm shall be inspected prior to issuance of a license. Failure of a hobby farm to comply with the requirements for a hobby farm or any requirements or conditions placed on the special permit approval for a hobby farm shall result in the license being denied. Any hobby farm denied a license shall be subject to review by the Board of Adjustment to determine if the special permit shall be revoked. No hobby farm or farm animals shall be kept." The rest are getting into different regulations. So that's the part that talks about revoking a license and revoking the special permit.
Thank you. I did research in response to the letter that we received with concerns about property value amongst others. I could not find any real data that said that hobby farms affect property values. I understand that it's, some folks like them, some folks don't. But I don't know that it's the role of the commission to sort of start to walk that line. I'm not a huge fan of the regulations in the first place, because I do think that hobby farms have a place even within city limits, whether it be chickens or otherwise. The only thing that I could find that really dealt with property values was that Forbes' top 10 cities over the past five years, between eight and 10 of the top 10 cities, in fact, allow hobby farms, either backyard chickens or whatever you want to call it. And so there doesn't seem to be the negative impact on property value, which is addressed in the letter, I really didn't take that seriously, because I understand that that's folks' investment. But the evidence doesn't play out. And so with there being an annual review process to make sure that if these are bad players, you know, neighbors do have a recourse, I'm planning on supporting staff's recommendation with those conditions of limiting it to eight hens.
This is Thornsberry. I have a question regarding this annual review. So the city has an ordinance that says you will do the annual review of the license and all. How's your performance been on that?
This is Schrader with staff. That entire provision was placed in the ordinance when the zoning ordinance was redone in 2011. We have not had a lot of hobby farm requests come through since enactment of that. There have been a couple. That has been something that we have not really worked out yet, the whole licensing and annual inspection process. So thus far, our track record hasn't been great, but it's really kind of, I mean, I know it was 2011, several years ago, but it's, it's not that long ago, and we haven't had very many requests yet. So it is something that we kind of need to get the process worked out and make sure we're doing that properly.
So the couple you've had, have they had reviews?
No. I think we had two that were over a year.
And so they'll be scheduled soon?
Yes.
And would those come back here after review?
Only if there were issues that we thought they were in violation with their approvals that therefore suggested that their license should be denied and the special permit recommended for being revoked.
And even at that point, it would go to Board of Judgment?
That's true. Actually, it's written into the ordinance that way to go straight to the Board of Adjustment.
So if they were to reapply, they would have to come back if they were denied, reapply?
Correct.
So in this case, I heard you say that the, the window of the license is July 1, June 30. How do we handle this particular incident? It's June 2. So is it, will they get their license for the coming year? Or do they have it just till June 30?
The intent would be, if you approved it, Board of Adjustment will be at the end of the month, so it will probably be within days of July 1. We would just move it to July 1.
Great. And this incident kind of works out. What about others that are in December? What is your process for that?
Then they would have to get a new one in July 1.
Okay.
And what is the fee for that?
There has not been a fee established.
Okay.
There will be a fee.
Council would have to take action to establish a fee. And there hasn't been any discussion of establishing a fee. It may need to be discussion if it becomes a cumbersome...
Well, if you're going to send code enforcement out there, at least yearly, you know, I think you would at least want something to cover the costs of that.
This is, go ahead.
Sorry, Thornsberry here. And they seem to be getting more and more popular. I mean, in just in two and a few short months, actually, that we've ruled on. So, I don't know, it's just something that, it's a process that needs to get fired up, in my opinion.
This is Tack. I, when I moved from Southern California, and you're familiar with San Diego, I personally liked the two-chicken limit. I came here, I loved my chickens. I wanted to have chickens. I rented a farm on the west side of the state, loved it. Started with 30, ended up with six, because coyotes get hungry. So we lost a lot of chickens, but we were on five acres, and we had down to six chickens. I just think if we're starting to get some precedence, I don't know, chickens, little guineas go this big? I had a Rock Island Red, she was huge. So I'm thinking, when you're talking about chickens, you're talking about a large variety of sizes of birds. And if you allow a hobby farm in one area, then how do we decide, well, you can have it there because you're closer to agricultural side of town, but you can't bring that into town?
I feel like if we're going to set some type of standards, personally, I'm more comfortable with two. I just think if you have two chickens, it's like having rabbits. A lot of people raise rabbits, you know, they're on farms, too, and there's little bunnies and there's big bunnies. And I just think we have to kind of look at what kind of precedent we want to set, because like you said, otherwise, we're going to be sending code enforcement. And as much as, I personally like chickens, I understand, I live in the city now, so if I want to have a lot of, you know, farm animals, then I should start looking to getting some, like we did, rent a small acreage. So I guess that's my concern in living with chickens and living in the city. I just think two is a good number, probably not more than three, because, you know, you start getting a lot of animals in a small area, they're going to start to smell. That's just the way that it runs. So that's my concern, is I'm for hobby farms. But I think if we're looking at the number of animals, I just think that the word hobby means a couple here, maybe a llama, a small, I mean, it's like with the goats we discussed. Are we talking pygmy goats? Are we talking large goats? Are we talking little guineas? Are we talking, you know, and definitely not a rooster, because we had neighbor snake of rooster in California. And I'm telling you, that whole crowing at sunrise is all Hollywood. That thing crows all day long. I think it was blind or deaf, but it was a nuisance, because it was right behind us and you could not take a nap if you were there too. So those are my things I'd like to chime in. But I'm okay with two, maybe three, but I think eight is getting a little much for in-town. Just my thoughts.
This is Morrison. I kind of want to go along with the thread that Thornsberry's brought up. In my short time on the commission, I think this is going on the fourth one. We've kind of been all over the map about yes and no. And I typically am swayed by neighbor opposition, and that's how I've historically voted. So I can tell you, I'm going to lean that way probably this time again, but because this keeps coming up, I think we really need to refine the process, put in some conversation with city council about code enforcement fees, because I don't think that this trend is going to be stopping soon. I suspect it's coming more at us. And I really appreciate the research that Tavis put into the top 10 cities.
Just one other thing, one of the handouts that you were handed, page 44 of the zoning ordinance, there's a circle part that shows you what we have in the ordinance for horses. And so what we will be looking at doing is probably trying to get more specific for different type of animal types moving ahead.
How about four-leggeds and two-leggeds?
And probably need to deny some things out of the city entirely. And so again, we'll be doing some more research on, again, getting more specific, because I believe you're exactly correct. We've been all over the board in different situations. I mean, I think the one over off of MLK was a, was a large acreage that had very little potential for sewer and water provision, so there'd probably be more, or very little amount of residential development anywhere near it, so we allowed them to have more animals. Whereas some of these other, more recent ones are in more residentially defined areas that you're going to have neighbors closer, even if they're not there now, they may be in the near future.
And I agree with Leah. I appreciate Travis, you brought that up, because all due respect, we hear that argument a lot, property values go down. But I have yet to see actually any evidence, and it does help us when we see, here's what this place had, and here's how the property values went down. So I know that argument personally, I don't consider it anymore. I hear that all the time, but I appreciate you taking the research, because then we can see, is there really a direct correlation? So, I agree. Any final discussion before we move to a motion? Okay, if not, I'd like to entertain someone to present a motion either for or against the request.
I move that we approve the request for, to allow a special permit for a hobby farm for up to eight chickens located at 526 Quincy Street. And it'd be approved for the following reasons. It would not appear to have a negative impact, and the chicken coop has to be housed as described in the application, and it would be limited and it would be limited to a maximum of eight hens, and they must be contained in a fenced area.
No roosters.
And, well, that's already, no roosters.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Jerry and seconded that we approve a request for the hobby farm with the conditions that there would be eight chickens, no roosters, and that would be contained in the fenced area in the location shown on the applicant's site plan. Is there any final discussion? I'd like to have a roll call vote for this. And a yes vote would be for the request, and a no vote would be against.
Hall?
Yes.
Flynn?
No.
Morrison?
No.
Buckles?
Yes.
Tackett?
No.
Thornsberry?
No.
Okay. The time is now five twelve. Our second.
Oh, and just for everyone in the audience, that was a recommendation that goes to the Board of Adjustment on the fourth Tuesday of the month for the final say.
Okay, our second special permit on the agenda is a request by, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Jose and Rebecca Rivera, for a special permit to allow for hobby farm located in the R two, one and two family resident district, located at two two one four Avon Avenue, that begins on page forty-three, sack report.
This is Western with staff. The applicants are requesting a special permit for hobby farm that will allow them to keep approximately twelve goats to operate a hobby farm on a two-acre parcel within the city limits. It appears that the request could have a negative impact on the area. The surrounding land is zoned for residential use, and allowing a farm could negatively impact the development of the surrounding parcels. There wouldn't be any impact on traffic conditions or pedestrian movements in the area. The site in question is zone R two, one and two family residence district, and has been since the adoption of the ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows. To the north, single-family homes, zone R two, one and two family residence district. To the east, single-family home and vacant lot, zone R two, one and two family residence district. To the west, single-family homes and vacant lots, zone R two, one and two family residence district. To the south, vacant two-acre parcels, zone R two, single-family residence district. The site in question is a two-acre lot, there is a mix of existing single-family homes and large vacant lots surrounding the property in question. Staff feels that there is a good chance that the vacant lots in the area will be built upon at some point. Screening is not required for this request, however, there is a requirement of a five-foot fence be utilized for the raising of goats. Future land use map designates this area as low-density residential, the proposed hobby farm would appear to better fit the characteristics of an agricultural use and not be in conformance with the future land use map. The applicants are proposing a special permit to allow for the establishment of a hobby farm generally located at twenty-two fourteen Avon Avenue. The site in question is a two-acre parcel where the applicants reside. Their overall area is rural in nature, as many of the lots are very large and very wooded. The area dedicated to the goats is approximately one point five acres, which includes a four hundred and forty square foot barn built in nineteen seventy-eight, and a two hundred and forty square foot hay building built in nineteen fifty. Staff would have concerns with locating hobby farm that includes twelve goats in the city limits, as the future land use map indicates that the proposed area should be used for low-density residential. Staff believes that the vacant parcels in the area would appear to have a potential for residential development, and allowing a hobby farm in this location could negatively affect development of the surrounding properties. Staff feels that the proposed farm would better be, would be better located on agriculturally zoned location. Staff has done some research on other communities, and the city of San Diego seems to be kind of the pioneer for allowing agricultural animals within the city limits. Their ordinance states that no matter the size of the lot, two goats, miniature goats, are allowed per single-family household. There were some others that broke it down based on size of the lots, but majority of the communities we looked at only allowed the two. And staff has done some thinking on this, and as Noel had pointed out, number four on that copy of the zoning ordinance regarding the horses. It would appear that that would probably be a good way of deciding how many goats could be allowed per site. With a site that's one point five acres dedicated to the goats, that would allow, using the horse ratio, that would allow approximately six goats. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a special permit to allow a hobby farm generally located at twenty-two fourteen Avon Avenue be denied for the following reasons, the proposed hobby farm would not be in conformance with the future land use map, the proposed hobby farm could impact future development of the surrounding properties. The request for twelve goats is considered to be too many for this location due to concerns of odor. And allow, actually, and I'm pretty certain that there was actually more than twelve, I think there's about fourteen goats and two sheep. So it's a little more than what we originally thought. Oh, and the next-door neighbors are present, and you have the letter from them. So if you want to talk with them, they're here.
Thank you, questions for staff?
And I believe the property owner's here as well?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who asks if you would like to speak for or against this request? Will you come to the podium, please, please state your name and address for the commission and for the audience as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Westball, and I live at twenty-two thirty-two Avon Avenue. My wife, Michelle, and I own the adjacent one point six seven acres just to the north of the proposed hobby farm. Our house sits approximately a hundred and twenty feet away from where the animals are currently housed and fed. We have had instances where the goats have gotten out and gotten into our yard and eating our plants and shrubs. There have been instances where the goats have been trapped in the fence, and we've made contact with the neighbors to alleviate this, it's happened three or four times. Initially, when the owner moved there, she started out with one goat, and this goat ended up being given to the neighbors or whatever. And then there was an issue with some horses that were boarded there or whatever, they ended up in our backyard. And now we have approximately seven goats, excuse me, seventeen goats, and two sheep residing over there. And the most significant issue over there is our quality of life, and that is affected by the smell of the manure, the urine, and also the flies over there. The second issue is our well water. According to some of the information you may already have in your packet, and there's some information from Iowa State University and also the Code of Iowa that recommends a minimum lateral distance from the confinement area of these animals to be two hundred feet. The approximate distance now is a hundred and twenty feet. Our well is a shallow well, which would require this minimum distance of two hundred feet. Our quality of life has suffered because we are unable to entertain guests, we are unable to have our families over and grill out, we are unable to hang our laundry out in the line, we are unable to open the windows and enjoy the fresh air, it is very detrimental to our neighborhood. The commission members brought up the fact that of property values, I don't have an issue with property values, but I do have an issue of being able to market the property, should that arise. I think that we are probably going to be the most harsh neighbors, because this confinement area is right next to our property. I applaud them for trying to build a fence and conceal some of the area over there, but that doesn't help the smell or the flies, and it doesn't help our groundwater. A few months ago, we were up here because of the zoning request of a junkyard off an airline highway, and you people voted unanimously to protect our quality of life and our well water, and I would appreciate if you would do the same consideration now, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this request?
My name is Rebecca Rivera, and I have signatures from all of the other neighbors in our neighborhood, and I know you know Michelle and Rick, they both work for the city. I have not, and I want to make a correction, the horse that was in fact in the yard was our elderly neighbor's horse that, in fact, is deceased now, that I helped get out of their yard. We all get along very well, and everybody in, I don't know if you guys want this, but everybody in the neighborhood has agreed that that is the reason why we moved out there. Their house, in fact, is situated, I don't know how it was approved, but it's very, very close to our lot line. At one point, I think this is more of a personal issue than what it was presented as. They wanted me to sell a parcel of my land, because their house is very, very close to our lot line. And this is years ago, and I didn't want to split up the land, I have two and a quarter, about two and a quarter acres. We do have more goats now than ever before, because they're having babies. We did take some in from a petting zoo over by Rhinebeck, and they were pregnant, and we knew they were pregnant, we usually get them in the spring, get rid of them in the fall. It takes, if you think about horses, they graze all day, they're grazers. Goats eat a little bit, and that's, they eat a little bit, eat a little bit, it's a little bit different, I grew up with horses and animals. My kids helped birth these goats. All of my neighbors, everybody else, you can get the signatures, have agreed that it is, they have absolutely no problem with it, they in fact asked if they could borrow some of them to eat their weeds down, which is what we use them for. I'm not here to cause any kind of problem, just my family, my house, I've lived there fourteen years, we've always had animals. I'm a fairly young mother, I have children that I'm trying to raise in a natural way. They're involved in the animals, they help birth the animals, and we just enjoy being outside. And in fact, the new neighbors across the street is a very young family, and they were told, which I understand, I don't understand all of how things are coded necessarily. I was told when we initially moved there that we were allowed to have the animals, and you guys, I think it was Jeffrey with the zoning, he's no longer there, I was told, but he said that there's no problem with my animals, that we were grandfathered in, which I know in two thousand and eleven, when you, something happened where we had filled out an application now, and we did, I, I'm young, I don't understand at all, I don't come to city meetings, I do apologize. I work, go home, take care of my children, so does my husband, my neighbor across the street is planning on having animals, so I'm just really hoping, and everybody else in my neighborhood, and I'm hoping personal matters doesn't affect our lifestyle and our lives there. And I just don't want personal problems to be affected, to be brought in and be affecting other situations, and I'm nervous, sorry, I just got off work and...
We're all volunteers too, so we're, you're in good company, but we do go through research and go through our packets. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rivera?
What are you planning on doing with seventeen goats?
I mean, I don't think we have seventeen, to be honest. I'll have to go out and count, we do have a couple sheep that are leaving, but some of them are babies, and once they're weaned, they're being taken back to the Waverly Sale Barn. We get them in the spring usually, and get rid of them in the fall, we just have enough to eat up the backyard, this is the most we've ever had, because of the babies. There, a lot of them had babies, they're getting weaned, and they're getting taken to the sale, though. This is, we did have them this last winter, all through the winter, only for the fact that they had babies. And I have to admit, I kind of enjoyed it, because my kids got to learn the birthing process, and all my, if you look at properties, surrounding properties around us, we have horses, we have goats, or we've always had goats in the surrounding houses, right next to where the horses were, and the gentleman that passed away that had the horse, they had goats always, so I mean, it's been years of this lifestyle and living. We just use them to eat back, eat the grass down, though, enjoyment for my kids. I had, the one in fact that I had first, when I first lived there, was a family pet that used to sleep on my deck and come in my kitchen and get in my car. And when I went through my separation with my children's father, I am remarried, we've been together over ten years, but it was a lot for me to handle, and I gave him to the neighbor that loved him across the street, where he eventually died of old age. It's just trying to have clean living, and I wish, in fact, that you all could come over and see the setup, it's not as closely situated as you guys have been informed. I don't know, I wish you could come over and see my house and see the setup and see it back there, there's no flies landing on you, and back in the backyard, there's absolutely no flies. Mosquitoes, yes, mosquitoes like crazy, but there are no flies, that, not anything more than normal.
This is Flynnigan, and there's probably twenty-five signatures here, where are the?
They're a large family, they are directly across the street from me, they're the next to closest apart from Rick and Michelle. And they're the ones that was told, they just bought their home, purchased their home, and they were, they were told that they were able to have families, or animals there, and they were looking forward to it, they have a barn, they have acreage, their acreage is, I think, pretty comparable to mine, I have two and a quarter, and I think theirs is about two and a quarter too, they also purchased the property on Burton, that burnt down. She actually was going to come here today, but she's doing gardening and stuff, and she has, something with water was connected, my kids are over at her house right now playing, and it's just a family area, and if you have family that comes over, I don't want, I mean, it's always been a very loving area. There is a little, few problems in our neighborhood that everybody would have, but it's more on a personal level, not anything else.
I have a question, just as, and I understand you saying, I think it's great, and so be a teacher, I think it's great, and children can experience things. I guess as I'm thinking through it, and I'd like to hear the commission too, I don't think that we're against having those experiences, I mean, having that. And I think with a hobby farm, we're trying to get just a little bit without being a full-fledged farm. I think the concern is, is because it's in town, and as you've heard, we're worried about precedence. And I know seventeen, that's a lot of goats, and they make a lot, I, as I said earlier, I'm for a more downsized if we're in town, you know, I could see like maybe a couple of goats. Like you said before, you know, just kind of, like saving eight chickens, that's, it's a lot when you're looking in town, but I realize you are by two acres. It's still, I think what we're trying to find is, we want to have some conformity, and there is a difference between two acres and a third of an acre, but in the same instance, when you have a lot of animals, I think what we're trying to find is that balance between you live in, you live in the city limits, and if we start getting too many animals, it might be a better place in a more agriculturally zoned, where they have more room. Does that make sense? So that's what we're trying to find, and we want to respect, because I did live, that was one thing, when we did have animals in close proximity, there is that smell. I mean, if you put the salt blocks out there, when you have a lot of animals in a confined area, they do attract flies, and what I, one of the sayings I heard is, wow, you know, when I first came here, that smell is pretty strong for me, and someone else said, well, that's a smell of money. I don't even notice it, well, I did, because it bothered me, so I think everybody's a little different in how they're affected. It just seems like seventeen or even twelve, isn't a lot of goats?
I think we have twelve or thirteen right now.
And I wonder, when you have, you say that you knew they're pregnant, then you knew that the population would get a little bigger, and I'm wondering, would you be comfortable with a downsized, like maybe either one pregnant goat or just two goats? I guess we're trying to keep the numbers down, so we don't have a full-fledged farm, does that make sense? Because then, it's not a hobby farm anymore, I mean, it's not one llama, it's not two chickens, now we've got, it says here, three cows at one time, several goats, I mean, I'm looking at this, and this looks like a full farm, from the animals that come in and going. That's my concern, is if we allow, and I'll be honest, I'm not leaning that direction. I think, you know, some downsizing or something, seventeen, I'm personally not comfortable with. with, but I, I understand what you're saying, I'm all for giving that experience. I just don't know if your location for that many animals would be doable, and if maybe something could be worked out for a smaller size, I don't know. I think, I agree, this is something that, it's a kind of worms, I don't know if we realize we're opening, but I think, I just have feeling that, I just, I'm personally not leaning towards seventeen, but I want to tell you why. It's not that I'm not against it, it's the area, it's, we're in the city limits, and I just, we want to be fair to everyone. We want to consider to neighbors, we understand you have a lot of room from other neighbors. That's just where I'm coming from, and I'd like to hear from the commission members too, thoughts.
This is Thornsberry. I'm, I'm really concerned about the, the issue your neighbors brought up about the well and the water, and the proximity, and we, we were provided documentations about what manure, how it can flow into the groundwater. And is there a, a way for you to move your animals away from that corner to some other place on your two-plus acres?
They have, I, I said an acre and a half, and we measured it out, it's probably closer to almost two, not almost two acres, what was it? One point seven five, I believe that's back there. They have the entire backyard and other side to go, the building is over on that side, but it's longer than a hundred and fifty feet from their house. If you think a hundred feet is in between light pole distances, it's in the backyard where they're at, but they're grazed, and they're through it all day long, and I didn't, we maybe at one point had seventeen, we do not have seventeen right now, and we weren't planning on keeping these. As soon as they were weaned, I was going to get rid of them, and I don't ever plan on having this many again. We've never had this many before. It just was...
So, what number would that put you down to, once the little ones were gone? I'm just curious as to how many are just born?
Maybe eight. There, most, half of them are babies. And when the babies are weaned, we were planning on taking them away, or actually, I was considering keeping the babies and taking the adults away, because they came from a petting zoo, but I have a little bit harder of time to, my three-year-old tries to pet them, and they're not the babies that has touched them more than the adults, they're a little bit more larynx.
Okay, so, I heard you say earlier that you'd wean them, and then you would take them to Waverly in the fall, so it'd be all summer long you'd have that?
No, the babies we're going to wean and take right now. What I said earlier, I apologize, in the spring, we used to get them and get rid of them in the fall, just to eat the grass. They eat the shubs, the weeds, the unwanted along the lot line, and I do apologize, I'm not, I'm not going to say my goats have never gotten in their yard. Because they have, we have a problem, not a problem with deer, because it's beautiful, that's why we live out there. We have probably a hundred-plus turkey that are in our morn, in our yards, I wake up to them every morning, and deer, and they jump over our fences, and they were knocking the fences low enough, which they understand, because they put up a new fence to, to try to keep the deer from their yard, because they attack our brand-new fruit trees, everything that we put in, they attack and they eat. But with them jumping over the fence, they were lowering it, lowering it. We put the fence up, so it's over six foot, I believe, right now, and it was after talking to them, my husband talked to them, I keep to myself, I don't talk to anybody a whole lot, unless they talk to me first. I'm a very friendly person, I work at a local doctor's office, but I don't talk, I honestly, myself have not talked to them a whole lot. My husband did a lot of the talking, and I know Rick was opposed, but Michelle, my husband said that Michelle had told him that as long as it was six, that he was okay, that she was okay with it. The well water, if you would look on studies, it's not that close, and it wouldn't seep in to where it's at, they're not, the animals aren't located that close to the, where they're at. And it's like little rabbit poop, we have more deer than...
I, I would, you know, I would say that, that in general, I'm incredibly supportive of, of hobby farms. I think that they're, as you said, they're, they're actually an incredibly important piece of education. Twelve is a lot. Twelve is a lot.
I don't mind having less. I asked for a suggestion, how many is an appropriate number? When I talk to you, I wish, okay, how many is an appropriate number? How many are okay?
Judging from, judging from what staff mentioned, two was, two was, you know, in accordance with the horse...
And a residential area, and they said that they just weren't sure what, that's with a normal-sized lot. We have almost two and a half acres, and two would not touch any of the grass. We like them as little lawnmowers.
I, yeah, I, I understand, we're a John Deere community, yeah, they make lawnmowers. I think that, I think we do run a, a risk of setting, one, we have to, hopefully, in the very short future, make some determinations. I'm instinctively, especially after seeing the ISU extension reports, about a two-hundred feet minimum, that, there are, there are, I think, legitimate concerns with this location. While I understand that there may be neighbors that are close, that are supportive, can also recognize that there's neighbors here that are not, and with the large number of, of, of animals, at a minimum, I would like for us to table, I would, I would be in, I would be all right with denial, but at a minimum, I would like for us to table this so that the commission can really, and, and pretty quickly, develop some criteria for what hobby farms actually look like, and what actual farms actually look like, because this sounds like an actual farm to me. We've had, over the past couple months, a lot of clucking about hobby farms, but it's, it's time for us, so, yeah, it, it's time for us to, to really address the issue, because they do have a place, but this request of twelve is simply too much for me.
Now, I have a question. You said you lived there twelve years?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years, okay. Have you had goats the whole fourteen years? And lots of goats with no problems?
No. This is the most goats we've ever had, but we've had multiple, like, I think probably ten the most. And that's why I don't mind guidance. We don't, we don't work with the city, we don't deal with this every day. I don't mind guidance. If you were to say it needed to be two-hundred feet away, I can move my fence line, I can use it for more space for my kids, I can use it for anything. I, what mostly we need is guidance. I had six chickens before. My kids loved going and getting, getting the chicken eggs. We just, it's always been on this property, the fourteen years that I lived there, and I've had you guys out and tell me it was okay, that's the confusing part. I just wish I knew, if you, if I had guidance, I would have something to follow, but when you're told that it is okay, you guys came and inspected my horse, I had a horse, I adopted her, she was a wild Mustang, I had to have a six-foot fence, I wasn't required to ask you guys to come over, but I wanted to know, you, that's where the, I swear, I think his name is Jeffrey, came in, he's not in your zoning anymore, the gentleman that left, and he's the one that had said it was okay at the time, and she had to be in six-foot fence until we had her tamed down for so long, it was when we adopted her, and I had her for about eight years. And like I said, around the time when I split up with my ex, when we separated, is when I got rid of my animals, and I had to take a break, because it was just a lot going on for me, but...
Well, and I appreciate your honesty as far as just wanting direction, and I think that as a city, we need to be able to do that with, again, establishing rules and criteria that will, people know what they can and cannot do, and if we don't have that, I don't know how we can say nay or yea if we don't have someone that is not following the rules, because we don't have the rules.
I agree. We, I'm sorry, Tavis needs to leave, we want to make sure we get this to a vote, and I think what I'm hearing, I agree with, we, we all need guidance, and I know that, we, we look like we're all, we're volunteers, and we work with the planning department, and we, we do our very best to make sure that we have an informed decision, and we get their information the best we can, we read through, and we want to listen to your neighbors, because we're all neighbors here in Waterloo, and it is important, so we try to get all the information, and I think with the hobby farms, it's just all over the place for us, because we want to be fair, and, and at this point, the guidelines do not seem to be as clear. So, what we'd like to do is, if we can turn back, I'm hearing some ideas on how we can proceed for a vote.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question for staff. Right now, there is an application fee, correct?
Two hundred dollars.
Yes, okay. Recognizing that, that is a sizable amount of money for working families, is, is it possible for us to deny this request, but instruct planning staff that, that two hundred they paid for this application, it, basically give us time as a commission to come up with something, so that then we can give them some parameters? Is, is that possible?
Yes, yes, yes.
In the past, I think we've done the same thing by tabling the motion, so that the money wasn't lost.
Okay.
And we tabled it for a specified period of time to give us time.
And if we table, does that mean that at this time, that would, you know, if we can get some of the animals downsized, that would prevent code enforcement until we can get this, I mean, is that pretty bold?
What does that mean?
Yeah.
What's code going to enforce if we don't have numbers?
Well, yeah, generally, code enforcement will stay in action while it's tabled.
Yeah.
If there is not a discussion, or is there, our rules, we've already had one, one time through, and I don't need to touch you up, but we can, we're going to move forward to a vote, so our rules, we've, in all due respect, we've done the one more, and we've, and actually, it'll go in three and a half hours.
I would ask if you make a speedy decision because of the temperature, the warmer months and things like that, how much longer will we be going to have to endure this?
Certainly, and that's why we want to get this worked out for both of you, so there is a fair, fairness. So, without any further ado, we're going to go ahead and turn it back to the commission for a vote.
When you do this, will you give me an idea, like, so if, see, this literature, unless you, you look it up, it's not anywhere to be found in Waterloo, to give me an idea how far away, how many in that area, and what...
We'll go ahead, and we'll take care of the vote date, and then I would suggest working with the planning and zoning department, they can give you all that, because we're the commission, we don't have the information, the planning and zoning has, and they can work with you and see what needs to be done. But we need to turn it over to a vote, so Tavis can go, and that we can move forward, so everyone can walk away and hopefully get something worked out. So, any further ado, any further discussion, or any more information? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, hurry.
This is Thornsberry. I move that we deny the application for a special permit for the, to allow a hobby farm generally located at twenty-two fourteen Avon Road, because it's not in conformance of the future land map, and that it could impact the future development of surrounding properties, and that twelve, or fourteen, or seventeen goats and two sheep and whatever are just too many for this location. Further, that the two hundred dollar application fee be held in advance, and the fifth condition is that the planning staff create a proposed ordinance to define what a hobby farm is or is not.
Second.
Okay, it's the move by Jerrin seconded that, I'm going to do my best, that we deny the request for the hobby farm today, that the two hundred dollar application be returned to the applicant, and that the planning...
It wasn't, it was returned, it was...
Oh, just, I'm sorry, held in advance, that the two hundred dollars be held in advance, and that the planning and zoning commit, department work out some ordinance details so that this can be reviewed at further time for more clarity. Is that close? Okay.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Any final discussion?
Now, what would be the difference of tabling that or denying it?
Denying it, from my understanding, means the animals are removed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
This is traded with staff, although the planning commission does make a recommendation, so with the recommendation of denial, it, the applicant would still have the option of sending it on to the board of adjustment, who would, you know, have the option of following your recommendation or substituting their own.
But I don't think that actually answered the question about the animals in the meantime, so animals stay or animals go during the waiting time?
Again, this is a recommendation, so it'll be up to the board of adjustment first.
So, board of adjustment will decide, then the animals get moved or not moved?
Yes.
Not based on us tabling it or denying it?
You tabling it, then it would not go to the board of adjustment right away.
And the animals would stay while it's on the table. If you guys deny it, and the board of adjustment denies it, then the animals would have to be removed.
I mean, in all due respect, their home was built with this property there that had animals on it, but not this many animals, is that correct? Or there were no animals there when you built your home?
We've been there thirty years, and...
Rick, could you go to the mic?
We've been there thirty-plus years. She came after the fact. We've been there, she said she's been there fourteen years or whatever, the critters came with her.
So, when you built the home, there were no animals on that farm?
No.
Or, whatever you call it, not hobby farm, whatever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, a yes vote is a yes to deny, and a no vote means, no, so, makes sense, so, I would call for roll call vote. So, again, a yes is to deny, and a no is not to deny.
Flynn?
Of course.
Sorry.
Okay, could you, I'm confused at what you're saying this means.
Yes, okay. If you vote yes, you are saying yes to deny your request, hold the two hundred dollars in advance, and for the ordinance, but like they said, if you vote to deny it, then the animals have to go, because there's no, I will not go to the board of adjustment, we basically will stop here, but they will, but they will have the two hundred dollars held in advance.
So, if I vote yes, it goes to the board of adjustment?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, you guys confuse me. So, if I say yes, I'm voting to deny, so yes.
Buckle?
Yes.
Tackett?
No.
Thornsberry?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
If it passes five to one, it goes to the board of adjustment, or denied. Passes for denied.
But the animals, then everything has to go right now?
No, no.
Oh, the animals didn't?
No, the board of adjustment.
This is a recommendation.
I can't amend my vote.
Again, this is a, this is a recommendation.
Okay, it's still passed, though?
Correct.
Okay.
So, someone please tell her what this means.
This is a recommendation, it goes...
The board of adjustment has to decide what, has to give the ultimate.
Yep, that'll be...
And the business can say until they decide, they can decide either follow your adjustment, or they, your subject, I can't talk to them.
Yes.
Or they can choose a different, whatever, it's up to them.
Correct.
I vote a no, because I thought the animals will all have to go. I, I think some animals, if, if there's a way you can work on downsizing the animals and work, I would strongly encourage that.
I have no problem, I just want to, there's no amount, there's no nothing.
Well, if you can do that...
To be honest, this is the interesting, and it lives at home. I work a lot, this is, this is, because I have a major history that I...
Well, if you have to bring up, we're going to go ahead and move along with our meeting, but I would strongly encourage you, work with the planning and zoning, work with your neighbor, and see if you can get something worked out in a good, good way.
And hopefully, planning and zoning can give you a number that's acceptable to neighbors and ordinance.
Okay.
Moving on.
Okay, our final special permit under section C is a request by the Waterloo Humane Society Incorporated for a special permit to allow for the construction of a forty-eight foot by a hundred and twelve foot, five hundred, three, five thousand three hundred seventy-six square foot kennel building, located at one-one-six-six West Airline Highway, that begins on page fifty-one. Staff report.
This is Andera, staff. The request to construct the new kennel building would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, as the humane society has been at this location since the early nineteen seventies, and the majority of the surrounding area consists of light industrial or heavy industrial uses. Property in question is Zoned M1 Light Industrial District, has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Surrounding land uses include to the north, low-density residential, Zoned A1 Agricultural District; south, light industrial development, Zoned M1 Light Industrial District; east, Cedar Bend Humane Society Pet Cemetery... East, Cedar Bend Humane Society Pet Cemetery, zoned M1. And to the west, other buildings associated with the humane society, zoned M1 light industrial district. Applicant is requesting construct a new kennel building directly to the east of their existing intake building at the Cedar Bend Humane Society located at 1166 West Airline Highway. A kennel, or excuse me, the property is zoned M1 light industrial, which does allow for a kennel after a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission. Zoning ordinance requires that a kennel obtain a special permit in any zoning district. Overall, dimensions of the new building are 48 by 112, however, approximately 2,600 square feet of that area will be used for an outdoor exercise area. The interior of the building consists of approximately 2,776 square feet where access will be gained to the kennels. Zoning ordinance also requires for a kennel that one parking stall be provided for every 250 feet, or 250 square feet of gross floor area excluding the animal exercise areas. Therefore, 12 parking stalls are required for the new building. The site plan shows a total of six parking stalls for the new building, six less than what is required. And the applicant constructed their new adoption center to the west in 2010. A variance was obtained in April 2009 to allow for 14 parking stalls associated with that new building. 11 stalls less than the 25 required. Since approval of that variance, there have been no known parking constraints at this location. And there are approximately 16 parking stalls included with the intake building just to the west of the proposed kennel. And speaking with humane society board director, they have indicated that they have ran a boarding kennel for approximately one year at a location at 7611 North Union Road. And that traffic to the site is low and it comes at different times throughout the day. They also indicated that at the longest, a customer may be there for 15 minutes when dropping off or picking up their pet. There will be two employees working at the boarding kennel and they will utilize a new parking lot in front of the new building. If there are parking concerns, the two employees could utilize parking to the west at the intake building. Staff is recommending approval of the request for a special permit to allow for the construction of the 5,376 square foot kennel building at 1166 West Airline Highway for the following reasons. Request would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan of future land use map for this area. The request would not appear to have negative impact upon the area as humane society has been at this location since the 1970s. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area. And with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. And two, that there be no vegetation planned between the new kennel building and the intake building to the west to allow for clear access for Mid-American Energy to access their equipment.
Questions for staff? Thank you.
This is Anderson with staff. Just real quick, before you start talking about a little bit more, I think we also would need a condition talking about an approval of a variance as part of the special permit. Never mind.
If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this request, we would ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the commission and the audience. Seeing them, I turn it back to the commission for either final discussion or a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the request with the noted conditions that staff placed.
Second.
It's been moved by Leah and seconded that we approve the request for the special permit for the new 5,376 square foot kennel building located at 1166 West Airline Highway. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Yeah, our final item on the agenda is in section D for vacates. There's a request by San Martin Management Limited to vacate 1.064 acres of West San Martin Drive right-of-way, located adjacent to 1111 West San Martin Drive. That begins on page 60. Staff report.
Hey, this request to vacate would not appear to have negative impact upon the surrounding area. Vacating of this right-of-way would allow for the applicant to incorporate the property with the overall site and the additional parking as needed to coincide with a 76,000 square foot building addition to this location, which will add new jobs. Site question is zoned C2 CZ conditional zoning district and has been zoned as such since June of 1995. To the north is Sunnyside Country Club, zoned R1. South is existing professional offices, zoned C2 CZ. East is Ainsborough Avenue and existing professional offices, zoned CP Plan Commercial District. And the west is vacant development ground, zoned C2 CZ conditional zoning district. There is an 8-inch sanitary sewer located within the area to be vacated. Mid-American Energy has a large overhead electrical line as well as an underground electrical line within the area in question. Any water main is located approximately 46 feet to the south of the edge of West San Martin Drive. Therefore, it will be necessary to retain a utility easement over, under, and upon the entire area to be vacated. At the technical review committing, committee meeting, the Waterloo Waterworks, Mid-American Energy and Engineering Department expressed concerns with the ground being cut into, possibly removing ground cover over the existing utilities. Waterworks and Engineering note that there, there shall be a minimum of at least six feet from the top of the water of main and sewer pipes to the surface to prevent any conflicts such as freezing in the winter months. Mid-American indicated that at least 42 to 48 inches of cover shall be over their underground electrical utilities. And that an island or similar protection is provided around the utility poles for the overhead electrical line to protect against any vehicular contact or damage. Then that no concrete can be poured directly around the utility poles. The engineer for the applicant has indicated that the existing ground, underground utilities along with existing south, along the existing south right-of-way line of West San Martin Drive will have to be lowered or relocated along with the relocation of fire hydrants. Waterworks has indicated that before the, any hydrants are lowered or relocated, plans will need to be reviewed by them before construction can begin. Prior to the request being forwarded to the city council, it will be necessary for the applicant to submit a detailed plan showing the proposed grades of ground above the underground utilities after the parking lot is constructed, meeting the minimums as specified. As noted, the applicant is requesting to vacate about 1.06 acres of city right-of-way along the south side of West San Martin Drive. The new parking lot they wish to construct there will be 81 stalls to go along with the new expansion of the site. Proposed parking will have, will meet the minimum setback of five feet from the north property line. There would still be enough right-of-way remaining after the land is vacated to have two eastbound lanes and the left turn lane onto, onto the north, onto Ainsborough Avenue. Staff is recommending approval of the request to vacate with, for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have negative impact upon the area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian and/or traffic conditions within the area. And with the following conditions. One, that the utility easement is retained over, under, and upon the entire area to be vacated. Two, prior to the request being forwarded to the city council, it will be necessary for the applicant to submit a detailed plan showing proposed grades of ground above the underground utilities after the parking lot is constructed, meeting at least six foot of ground cover over the existing sanitary sewer and water main and at least 42 to 48 inches of ground cover over the underground electrical line. And three, that an island or similar protection is provided around the utility poles for the overhead electrical line to protect against any vehicular contact or damage. That no concrete can be poured directly around or up to the utility poles.
Questions for staff? I just have one. I think it's that concern of, it doesn't sound like the poles are anchored in the ground other than if something like a vertical wind or something should whip up. We just want something to keep the poles and come down. I guess I'm, maybe I'm just over concerned, but I know in Bitten they have those winds and is that not really a major concern or?
I suppose not from our standpoint, no.
This is Thornsbury. As a former telephone employee, they know how to set poles.
Okay, that, that's all I need to know. I'm sure it's on by just saw there was no concrete. I'm making sure they're going to be in the ground.
Yeah, they'll set them.
This is Flynn. So there will be no access to the parking lot off of San Martin?
Uh, no. They'll, they'll utilize existing access points they have now to the.
So there's no, no on and off San Martin from their property still? It still brings it back up to Ainsborough?
Yep.
Okay, good.
This is Morrison. I noticed the offer is a dollar. What's the taxable benefit of this vacate?
This is Anderson with staff. This was approved as part of the development agreement with VGM. For, I believe the cost to them is about 18 million for their new office building, which is about 70,000 square feet. The increase in taxable value, I believe, was, was close to, was 6.5 million or something like that.
Sounds like a bargain.
Just as a note, we are following the section of state code 306.23, which has to do with a former state right-of-way instead of normal city right-of-way. Which is something that we're doing with the South Sunnyside lots to the west as well now.
Further questions for staff? Okay, if anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this request, we've just asked you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the commission and for the audience.
Wendell Lopkus with VJ Engineering, 1501 Technology Parkway in Cedar Falls. Yeah, this is just a step so that we can go ahead and, and prepare the formal plans. We've worked with the traffic department, the engineering department, and actually we've got a variance from the board of adjustment for the parking aisle width in the new parking lot in order to get the clearances and that sort of thing. So it's just a step in the process, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? If not, I'd like to return it back to the commission for either final thoughts, discussion, or a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the vacate request as noted.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay, it's been moved by Leah and seconded that we go ahead and we approve the request by San Martin to vacate the 1.064 acres of West San Martin Drive right-of-way.
Subject to the following.
Subject to the following conditions. To staff, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye. Nay.
Did you vote twice?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
I didn't know whether to say yea instead of nay. I mean, nay.
But it's a nay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion passes.
I move it to adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Jerry and seconded that we adjourn. Any discussion?
I have one.
No, I wouldn't say longer.
My only question is, we made you do something specific to make the research on the hobby farm start happening? Or is it just going to happen?
Eric? Yeah, it will, it will happen.
Okay.
We're, we're working on it right now with some of the, with some of the information that we put together for this last one or in our recommendations. So we'll keep moving on that as quickly as we can.
And for that to actually take effect, I assume city council has to vote on an actual ordinance.
Correct. I mean, generally, we come back to you with a draft form of what we, we've come up with. I would also anticipate we would want to meet with some other entities like ISU Extension, Blackout County Health, and maybe just a full technical review committee to talk to them about what the proposed ordinance would say for a number of animals, types of animals and all that. And then after we've done all that and come back to you and you've recommended moving to council, it would be up to council to approve it.
Okay.
I would echo to do it sooner than later.
But I just want to throw out, I think three cows is way too big. Cows, that's huge.
Even if you have six kids, I mean, no.
Well, yeah.
She wants chickens, she wants goats, and I want chickens. So we need something down, you know, clarify.
I mean, everybody likes that game, heydays.
Okay, motion still on the table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, we are adjourned.